Oak Ridge Planning Commission Work Session, Monday, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, seven P M. And City Council Chamber, Oak Ridge City Hall. Welcome commissioners.
Yes. We can share. I have a discussion of the agenda. It's pretty simple, I guess. All right. Mr. Carter?
Yes, here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Metcalf? Okay. Mr. Grant?
Present.
The votes.
Yeah.
And Mr. Metcalf?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, gentlemen, you might in. Let's see what you want to do.
Yeah, well. On the agenda, we have a public comment period right now. And I don't see any public.
Any public on Zoom that we like comments? Public on Zoom.
No, look on Zoom.
Hearing none and seeing none in the room.
So, item number two on the agenda is concerning a whole problem we had last, last hearing where somebody was disrespecting the DS as far as time limits go. So, what's what I'm suggesting and what Chief Martin has suggested is that when somebody doesn't want to keep stop talking after three minute time limit? And they're ignoring our instructions to stop talking is that we take a recess. And all of us leave.
I would say that the issue was more that the three minute rule wasn't applied equally across everybody.
Well, that's the next thing we're going to talk about.
Okay. So I don't, I think if we made it really obvious that we were doing three minute timing, people would respect it.
Right, and I think maybe some of the confusion came in was that we, last time we allowed somebody to borrow minutes from somebody else.
Let's not do that.
Let's not do that.
In the previous meeting before that, we allowed the people to talk and talk. We spent the first whole hour.
Listening to people talk.
Listening to.
Perhaps longer.
If I may, I got a suggestion. I, I wish it was taken out of those. We just follow their, their guidance, that's the three minutes straight. The recess and you know, sharing minutes. These are three things that we, that, I mean, Kitchin had outlined at the beginning of the last public hearing. And this is all suit so that the, the those who do, who do get to talk, it's consistent across meetings.
Yeah, it's just across the whole government.
Exactly, yes.
Right.
How does city council time, who does the timing?
Usually it's Mayor Kitchin.
That's what, yeah, John was timing for it at the last.
I don't see who's getting the timer. But I do know that he's at least attempting, I'm more than happy to, I'm we do, we did order timer for this purpose, I don't know when it'll show up. The city administrator has done that. So it should be any day, hopefully, or. Mr. Anderson is having to, he has technical issues.
And maybe moving forward as we open it up for public comment, we announced that it will strictly be holding you to a few minutes.
Well, I'd like to see.
Summarize their complaint or whatever and then submit, because all of them seem to be coming in with these huge stacks of paper. They can submit that and go into the.
I would like to see public comment move to the last item.
Is that possible? I was curious about that as well.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we're at, you know, city council, I think both sides, but I mean, for us, I mean, really, what we're, you know, we're here to hear facts and that, and I understand people's feelings and all that other stuff, but in, in reality, our adjudication is based facts that are before us, not their common, so. You know, and you know, there's some kind of confusion about what they believe evidence is and what evidence is for what we want to need. So I think that they're, their, their, their opinions are valid and I, I, I respect that, but I think that they shouldn't be moved to the back of our business. But they will have an opportunity in the hearing to make statements for, against, and in general. So really, the public comment part is just, you know, to discuss the weather. More or less. Right?
So I, I was thinking there's sort of a cathartic effect, I mean, people get it off their chest and they, I mean, we're not here for that necessarily, but I think we need to be mindful of people's strong feelings about stuff and, but I, I really think the three minutes is and, and, and we should stick to it and we should let them know that's where it is upfront.
Right.
And the minute you deviate from that for one person and you just threw it out, just threw it out the window and as far as moving it to the end. And I don't know why, why do we want to put it to the end?
So stop holding us up.
Well, I haven't thought about that, so I, I work in consensus building, especially with nonprofits, so it's a little different with the public. But, um, and, and I'm kind of coming in at the same time as the public, but I have expertise in this area. I can still understand where they're coming from, kind of just being new to this process and when you don't have all the gaps, so my kind of question and point to, to this point is I would like to see public comment maybe happen after a presentation. And work on some ideas, they, I, I think we need to bring people up to speed in the process in a very concise, logical to the point, very brief PowerPoint to start our next meeting, because otherwise we're just kind of wasting everyone's time. Without taking that in consideration, so if we can give that an opportunity before people have public comment, like just a short, general summary. But if there's all this information and like even for me, like I'm a professional and it's just overwhelming. And so we're kind of talking at points, we're pulling points out the air, here to here, and even kind of lumped together. But if you can see sequentially how this has come to be in very succinctful at once. Very key, what is the key criteria, you know what I'm saying, like like four or five? Our point, I think we'll do a lot.
But the public comment is designed like it said, to talk about what's specifically on our agenda for the evening. Public comment is just general comments that they want to make to the commission. And to his point, if we move it to the end, they have their opportunity to speak for or against or in general. And then they can, because right now they're using public comment to pick their argument. Which was trying to explain to her is that you're doing it out of sync, it's not going to show up in the record in the spot that your opposition should show up.
Right, you know, and just in terms of like uh, timekeeping and being productive in our time, that's what I'm saying, if we have a chance, and there's kind of this idea of like, let's, let's just bring work out there. And I mean, it's to your point about it being.
Right, well, I'm thinking that too, that they're coming in at the beginning and not listening to what we're going to be saying. And they've already formed a comment based on talking to neighbors, talking with a cat or whatever. They already have a preset personal agenda where those questions that they're bringing may be answered in what are proceedings they're going to be. And, and if they still are, if they still have those doubts or questions, then at the end, after they've learned more about what we have, then they can probably ask more pointed questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing to follow up on that is that, and we should address the questions that we've heard of to this point and that power, I mean, not like every single one, but like in the bigger picture, like let's try to be comprehensive, so they do have their answers.
And meaning like where people are, like, why are we doing things?
Yeah, I mean, I think when, when people, when there's not Rex is saying to understanding people are going to fill in the gaps and it, and it matters how we do this as much as what we're doing and that is how we, you know what I'm saying, so it matters how, how we talk about it.
It does, so I mean, what I'm trying to do is to give us a chance to put some of those answers out on the table before, before we're, you know, kind of segueing off based on the public comments in the beginning. Because sometimes you'll get people who will, who will start and, and avalanche. But you know, still stimulate other people to follow that kind of line of thought, which is then influencing us and taking away time that we need to explore the topic. So I mean, if we're on a journey to explore the topic together, then at the end, then they have an opportunity to be more educated. I mean, that's the whole point, I'm saying I just, you know, for, for that type of, uh, thing where it's just a public comment about, well, it's kind of like questioning, well, this is what I've heard in the great mind. Right, so they're asking us to address that before we even get a chance to just have our discussions, right? And our discussions are going to hopefully educate them into whether or not the opinion that they're holding is correct or incorrect, or maybe we can add some more education to them about what we do, because I see a lot of this as being is that the people don't understand what we do. I mean, we have these, we have meetings and we, and we, and we address different zoning issues and all that stuff, but we, we rarely, we rarely get public participation, right? And so when we have something that is actually hitting a nerve, well, then, then we get a full house, right? And it's not, they're not really keyed into what we're really trying to do. Like they're alluding to that we're in cahoots with developers and, and homes forever and whatever to, to, you know, bring, make Oak Ridge a Eugene song, you know? Well, how do they know that? I mean, those are actualizations, you know, and if, if those people have malice when they're making those accusations on record, they don't have any evidence that shows that we are. It's still a lot of case where if there were people here, you could ask them, how many people believe that the government of Oak Ridge is corrupt? And you'll get hands at them. And when you ask them, then you ask how many people have evidence that the government of Oak Ridge is corrupt? Good, that's right, because nobody has any evidence.
Uh, Mr. I started around, but apparently we are having difficulties with our camera. It's not putting a signal out and you can see it kind of just. Do you want to continue? We started meeting, what would y'all like to do? We still didn't hear, but we're not being seen.
Do we need to be seen?
Okay.
So, Mr. Metcalf had a question and then Jude raised it.
Um, well, now I have two things, I think the education that you're talking about goes to Mandy's point of like we've hit a nerve and now what we need to do is go back and backfill the information that they're filling in the gaps, which I think is a separate topic than the three minute, minute comment period. Um, but with the three minute, minute comment period, I feel like, or move, sorry, moving the comment period to the end, I'm wondering if we're opening ourselves up to actually more, um, because if we, if people get up and like we make it clear that the public comment period is for the weather and if you today to speak in favor, against, or neutral about what we're talking about, then please hold that for that part of the time. I think that if we move the public comment to the end, then that gives people a second chance to get up and yell at us about things. Uh, I mean, sorry, I shouldn't say it that way, but, um, I think, like, that's how I feel is that like we've gotten a little bit like beat up here, um, for, yeah.
We tried to run me to tell.
Yeah.
Totally.
Right.
They were, we got, we got pulled.
Yeah, I was on Zoom listening, um, to it, but I think, but they did understand it at the end, like once the person had yielded the floor, um, when that person came back up, they're like, I'm sorry, I didn't know that like this is where, you know, but it also wasn't clear to me that that was the case to start with, right? And so I think when you interrupt people who are upset about what they're talking about in the moment, it's like a defensive reaction where they're like, oh my God, they're trying to stifle my opinion instead of them knowing the rules upfront and knowing you only have three minutes, because I hadn't heard the three minute thing until that person was like five minutes in and then said something unpopular and then it was like, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up and it's like where did that come from, you know, and so I think that feels really, really rough and so setting the boundaries upfront um, should really help with that.
That sounds like I missed a good meeting.
Yes.
You do.
Jude, you had a comment?
Yeah, um, thanks for that, Megan, and you know, apologies for coming in a little bit in the middle of y'all's conversation, but, um, I mean, I, I think that we, some of this could be, you know, something we address with some really basic communication tools. Such as like just creating a subpage on the website that actually details the entire history of this thing, going back to the T G M process and the previous land use, uh, and zoning change, um, just like a central place where all of our meeting agendas are. And then just opening meetings with, um, again, similar, uh, just where this is all coming from and, and, you know, one of the tools I try to use particularly for not just, uh, public meetings, but board meetings, because you know, we're all living lives too in between these meetings and trying to catch up, um, you know, we, we digest a lot in our board packets and stuff, and so, you know, trying to make it so that you know, my, my general rule of thumb is like seventy-five percent of the content covered in, in one meeting shouldn't be new. It should be, you know, reminding people arriving at, you know, this is where we are today. Um, and, uh, I'm not saying that that's not been done, or, um, you know, I'm just saying maybe just taking more of that kind of facilitator mindset with these discussions and, and just accepting that. Yeah, maybe this is the first time they clued in when they got something in the mail, that's just the way it is. And we may not be able to change everything about how the public views, um, the city of Oak Ridge, um, and their opinions about it, um, I think everything starts with the way we behave today and moving forward and um, you just keep trying, that's just what iterative engagement, engagement is, um, and you know, there's, I think what people are asking for is just more transparency and, and to Megan's point. Um, we have the ability to, um, not control the narrative, but our, our narrative and be just transparent about the way that we've approached this, and I think if people saw that and um, and we could easily point in meetings saying, you know, this is all somewhere central, you don't necessarily have to have seen just today's agenda to know what's going on, because seventy-five percent of what we're talking about has already been talked about and it's iterative and, and we're only moving forward this much right now. Um, and so that, that may help again, um, just reduce the feeling um, and, and sense that some of this is coming out of nowhere. Um, but again, I'm suggesting work that probably some staff person may have to do and that may be harder than I'm making it appear. Um, so it's just a suggestion and hopefully, um, you know, again, we can just start today to do a little bit better and try to meet people where they're at.
Do you guys think it would be best for those public, public comments to have a sign in sheet?
We have, I said again.
Do we have a sign in sheet?
We don't have to have a sign in sheet, in fact, it's, uh, the issue with sign in sheets is they're not Zoom friendly. Uh, there's always been a sheet over there, but the sheet is not, if you want to be on the interested party list, or if you want to receive updates, is the sheet is over there. But to require somebody to sign into a sign in sheet, I know that used to be the norm, we COVID. We can't, I just, that can't be the norm moving forward as long as we're offering all these meetings on Zoom. So, um, I just wanted to mention that we do have, I'm hoping that everybody's seen it, but we do have, but our cities, we will save a bridge.
I'd say it's been transparent, it's all over.
Red banner across top. And here is the program since twenty twenty-two. Um, I do definitely agree with Mr. Anderson's um, comments that we do need to have this on here, uh, the balance is information overload.
This is great, and I, I mean, and if we're doing this, then we don't have to feel defensive either, um, and just accept that some people are still going to be hearing this for the first time and.
Yeah, um, I just see to that point, I we have to try and put it out there.
And that, that started in twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
Same with that. And to that point, the person who, who's making the comment and didn't want to stop and blah, blah, blah. They researched the website, they've gone back over the YouTube videos because one, they excited that and two, they had a discussion with me about.
So I am terribly sorry, I did miss a lot of your conversation trying to fix our broken camera.
Oh. That's okay. You can, you can listen to the recording.
What's, what's the chance that, um, that they don't really understand what what our responsibility in this situation is? Like if, have they read H B two zero zero one? Do they understand that, hey, we didn't make the rules, the people that, that were voted in made the rules? Right. It's not us. Right. Even though House of two thousand and one, majority doesn't apply. Right, it does. But you are, you are correct, these are House of the Senate bills. Could be told there are some things that I think are best practice. Uh, so we rely upon only House of the Senate bills, I think we're going to agree with.
But do you think we should be really transparent about that though, because I under in, in the impression I got coming along with this, and I know I'm, you know, so I didn't start at the beginning of this was that a lot of this was required for us, and I think the language of require has been used a lot in the PowerPoints that we've put out to the the public, and I think that's where people feel like they found that like things, like, do you guys even know that like you don't have to do this? And so I think, and I was trying to ask that question like, um, in the last public meeting where I was here in this chair, um, like can we get a list of like what's actually required, what do we think is best practices, what, you know, uh, you know, it's just kind of like, just be really, really transparent about like
which you wish.
Yeah, what that is, uh, because I think that would go a long way to restoring trust, because I think people think we're doing this on a flawed premise. And I, I also think some of the language has been flawed that we've put out there where we are saying required when it hasn't been required. Um, so I mean, that was my reading of it and like I'm on the commission, so, um, I understand that confusion.
Rick, what I'm, I'm suggesting for, kind of consensus building, um, what you alluded to very nicely about the seventy-five percent of the content being what you've already done, but like this time, because we are back typing at this point, um, bring people up to speed in the process and very concise, uh, and probably staff report. But, um, just a few PowerPoints, you know, point A to B, what are the criteria that you're from the H B? What are the bills, what are the other criteria, and I, and I can give, I, I could share an outline of what I see that, like I've done this process a lot, but criteria, and then we took this analysis and then now, and then now at this point, you know, and then maybe it's like three, four, five. But I think that can just go a long way of being able to place themselves in the process.
I think you were suggesting that we deaverade that at the beginning.
Yes, but I would do that before everything, yeah, I mean, possibly even before the general public. First. Yeah. Because you're always, you're always going to have new people coming in.
Yeah.
And that would be on where we're having a public here, right?
Yes.
Majority of the time, just so I can throw this out here for somebody that's been doing this for the past years. It's not this way, just like they said, there's nobody in here, or there's a couple, there's somebody in here who's looking for a variance or, or something of that nature. And we're just adjudicating that, there's no sort of free other than the, the staffing for stuff that Rick sends to us prior to it. That this is what's on our agenda for this month and that's been ninety-five percent of what we built with, for the most part, in public meetings. This is a oddity.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, so you guys, I mean, you weren't here at the very thing, but when, when this first came up about rezoning areas of cities, one of the one of the thoughts that the commissioners had at that time was, well, what parts of the city can support increasing the density of people, so I mean, the original starting point was, well, let's map out the utilities and find out which areas of town have the appropriate infrastructure in the ground to, to support moving to an increased density.
Knowing that the city cannot afford to improve infrastructure in areas where it's efficient for higher density houses.
And that got us finally to the maps that we, we voted on, is where we weren't looking at. Uh, we had already pre-identified areas in the city that supported increased density, now we're looking at other criteria that would make it, uh, favorable and unfavorable to increase in the amount of density or the amount of traffic in the area, you know, like how far away from, uh, parks, how far away from, uh, bus routes, you know, various other thing, other, uh, basically judgments of how people interact with the zone, right? Because, because I, you know, I feel that zoning has two parts, it has, has this physical part and it also has a responsibility to take into consideration how human beings are going to operate inside it. Right, and something that's not really written, written down. But the considerations of how are you going to interact with the zone is important. And especially where we have a small, small population base, I think we have like fifteen hundred water meters, basically. And, uh, you know, so it's, it's a much more compressed, um, analysis from them, because, um, a lot of them don't understand change and they don't want change. And a lot of them, uh, think that, or, you know, there's a lot of different thinkings that are, are kind of, uh, outside the capability of a bridge, you know, like, uh, a, a strong employer with, you know, multiple jobs uh, that are living wage jobs, right? Um, and not necessarily tied to hospitality, so, um, how, you know, if we have companies for interest in coming to Oak Ridge, you know, one of the criteria that I'm looking at is, is, is there housing for my workforce? And if there is no housing for ability for the workforce, then they'll go to someplace where they do have the potential to have housing for their work. Right, so I mean, that, it's kind of a double edged sword there, you know, they're going to move to a, a larger metropolitan area where there's more opportunities for the workforce to get housed and not necessarily come to the smaller communities where, where the zoning is restricted and you can't expand the, the density or, um, providing the ability to build workforce housing, right? So, um, somehow you're going to, going to have to have it so that people can, can have their cake and then look at it for a while before they chew on it, right? And, and so I think that the approach that we're taking is we're going through multiple levels of classifying things that, that we know will, will work without overburdening the, the, the residents in their livelihood and in their lifestyles. And it's not that we're, we're, we're opening the door for increased development, but also the other side of that is developers are not going to come unless they see a growth potential uh, in the population. So there's possibility now that we have the ability for them to come in and do some building, but then the other part of that is, is there the demand for that? That they can, you know, get their dollar back.
Yeah, and I think that's where people are filling in the gaps, and they're just like, well, why are we, you know, they feel like it's getting rammed through because they think there's some sort of back, you know, channel deal for you know, everybody keeps referring to section eight housing like as this, like, that like there is some conspiracy that like we're trying to just put section eight housing across Oak Ridge, um, just because we want. That like there is some conspiracy that like we're trying to just put section eight housing across Oak Ridge um just because we want. More people to live here, and that's the whole point of this project, so it really is an education thing.
Right, and what they don't realize is that there are a lot of section eight housing also in Oak Ridge right now.
I'm just trying to start an outline, I mean, if you want to be able to kind of. Put put some pieces together, but like, you know, what was the impetus, what are the goals? The what are the criteria, I mean, literally like.
Right, I mean, so that's that's kind of a nutshell, right? And I know that on the agenda night, we're gonna be discussing housing need analysis, but there's something that people are questioning because. They're they're doing calculations without using the data set that was used by. The the people who performed the housing weed analysis, so. They look to us to think that, oh, you're doing a housing need analysis, well, you guys have done it all wrong. And um we didn't do any housing need notes. Housing needed analysis was generated by a grant. We didn't pay for any housing need. We need there, and I think that, Rick, this is here, it's something that we need to make emphasis on. Is that there are components of the comprehensive plan that have to be in place. Before we can update the comprehensive plan. One of those is the traffic uh traffic needs. PSP. The housing need analysis is another thing that has to be up to date. Uh most people don't realize, and I don't know if you all look at it, but our comprehensive plan is written in nineteen seventy seven, it was a typewritten document. With two columns and the right hand column was generally a sketch or something. Right, and that's why it still says that, you know, uh mineral extraction. Is our primary source of business. Right, and so. Well, we can't touch that document until this document's done. This document's done. This document's done. There are a number of sub chapters that have to be brought up to date before comprehensive plan can move forward.
So um.
And just so you know, the the again, the person that spoke, I I explained that to them. Was that? Some of this is tied to the ability to get grants for other things down the road. And if the city's not got these documents up to date. And our focus being the. You know, uh. The stuff that the finding information we deal with. It's the 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 whole code is extremely outdated. And, you know, the entire time I've been on this commission, we've been. Hoping to pick at it and never gotten very far, this is the most. Uh, you know, closest we've gotten to actually making updates and improvements to it.
Go ahead, try to add to the uh your comment. Yeah, so our. Compliment is is grossly updated. And you're right, we have the elements, uh transportation, housing, uh one was it was a grand five for about a year ago, we didn't receive was uh. Economic property changes analysis. Um but the how do you analysis, they are dealing with deficiencies. Uh we'll get into details soon. But we cannot accept it and pull it into our. Our original plan with deficiencies. That's just not allowed to do that, we can't say, well, we have these problems, we're just gonna. We have to fix those deficiencies before we wrap that into. Our comprehensive plan of and the government plan is a huge amount of work. More of what we're doing today.
So what do you hope at all if? Because what I've heard time and time again is people saying, well. This is what the housing needs analysis, this is what. The what it's supposed to say. Um and. I get the sense that they're trying to hold us responsible. As though we were the ones that actually did the housing needs analysis, we're volunteers, I have a job, we don't have time to do that. So we hired somebody to do it, yeah, so this sounds like an excellent segue into the housing needed.
Thank you, wrap up of the of the comment. We're following. The city councils. Maybe just what they do.
Yeah.
And are we gonna move it to the end, or do we want to keep it um up top?
I I think for the public hearings, I'd rather see it at the end. Right, I mean, for other things where we're looking at variances or conditional use permits, I think that's. That's a relevant place to have it on is in the beginning. Because with the public hearing, they have the opportunity within the hearing. To make comments that are specific to the subject matter as being for against or in general, right? And then after they have. Had all this stuff. Spilled on them, at the end, they can come back and say, okay, well, I didn't understand this, or I didn't understand that, or. Something like that, right, but I don't think we start off that.
On the contrary, though, I think public comment is designed to. Influence and provide, when I'm talking about the public comment during our public hearings, but the in general. That happens all the time, I think it's designed to. Help decision makers. I mean, decision makers understand the complexities, understanding things of those who make the decision for.
Of the constituent.
So I. What it's worth, I know I'm a voting member, I I think you should have at the beginning.
I'm saying just in the public hearing, I'd rather see it at the end, I'm thinking, I'm saying that when we're doing other stuff like variants. Those those that let let the community have their opportunity to at the beginning. They have a public comment, I'm just saying that at the end of of the hearings, they've already had three chances to comment. Within the hearing body itself.
My mistake, I thought you meant this, right?
No, just that they hear.
I mean, that makes sense, and you'll you wait for the end for question and answer as you just.
Jude, you're more than welcome to start with yourself and speak. Throughout the whole meeting.
Okay, um. Why don't we just put the one public comment at the end and not do two?
For public hearings.
There is only one comment at the end.
Uh you guys were just talking about, like, should we just tell them no comment and that? We'll have one at the end, and then Megan was saying something about, well, then maybe they'll think so twice.
I think that what your hearing may say is that. Within what once the public public hearing is open. Then the people have the opportunity to come forward and present. Basically, evidence for or evidence against or e- evidence in general about the topic. That's being being adjudicated in the hearing itself. At the end of the hearing. I'm saying for hearing, this is only for public hearings, at the end of the public hearings. When when uh we've already closed or closed our basically closed our business, then we have a public comment session. Yeah, yeah, so but when we're doing conditional use permits, parcel splits, uh variances. All that normal stuff that there is no op- embedded opportunity for for comments. And we have, we we start with public comments at the beginning of those sessions.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I agree with that, thanks.
Okay.
Before we move on, do we want to add in something before? Where we're like into our agenda where we are like informing the public every time about like the process that we're doing.
The the overview, I think I think that should be the very first thing that we do.
I think we should maybe just have a sheet that defines that process to them, and they pick one up on the.
We we need to talk, tell them if you want it to be effective, uh because it literally is the framework that you work from for the entire meeting.
I mean, either way, right?
I mean, like, you know, and the website of one thing, this is a whole nother thing, um. What you like. Bring people along.
So but there's a, you know, there's a, there's an opportunity there for them to. Say, I don't think you're right.
There doesn't have to be um.
You know what I'm saying, it's it's just a slideshow. Started here, we've come to here, this is what. So there's such a slide that's up when I walk in the room?
Yeah.
And we don't read it to them?
Beginning of the staff report.
Comes from staff report like she's saying, no, yeah. So then they get an education, okay, because. Most of the people look at the website, some of the people get a piece of paper and they'll read it, but they won't understand it. If they, if you receive something three times, then it sinks in.
Right.
So if you repeat it once. Um so do we want to include that in the script perhaps?
Hmm or staff report? Um well, it wouldn't be a staff report because if you're asking to put it ahead. Then the staff report has a really solid place where it's at.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, I'm I'm kind of being very specific about, you know, I I come from an engineering background and architecture as well. And when we're all involved in this and we're like, and this information and this. And it's very easy um. Not see it from an outside perspective when you're not entrenched in it, and so I'm saying very specifically that this is like broken down um. Very basic, um this is like goals, criteria, this is what we've done, I mean, gonna be very explicit, and and again, I'm happy to help, uh yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna pass the thing because I don't think most of them, like, they're, most of them are coming in here saying. Everything we've done to this point is flawed.
I'd like to touch up, we're ready to move into that, but I had a question that you talked about, as he mentioned last time, the the data was good, and that was fine. I understand even housing needs analysis that they didn't have all the data points, but do we? Can we stick to that further?
We are, whenever you guys ready to remember that, I do have to take the one to.
Let's go.
So. Um. How can you announce this? So. A lot of your professionals. And I think I I I've been dealing with this, I'm sure that Kevin is. Probably here's for we recycle reports, we recycle stuff. And my best guess is this is. Not, it was not caught in the recycling. Um but with that being said. Um I know a couple of points, one I'm hoping they've understand is I don't think that the errors in here are worth. Throwing out completely, we don't want to throw up baby with bathwater. Um but if you can't remember this number right here at the end of the graph, it says, you know, four thousand three hundred twenty two. Um. The importance of that number. Is our twenty forty five, our twenty year goal. Uh we are supposed to. Be using numbers from Portland State University. They're the ones who do the forecasting for what? For your future growth. Um and it's not, it's not just a uh. It's not just an existential growth rate, it is a core component method which also brings in. Uh fertility, migration, in migration, out migration, mortality. Uh those things are also compiled into this, and to be honest, it's quite a, quite a lot.
So.
It's beyond my understanding.
So Rick, when when people are bringing up that we're not lining up with the growth rate percentage. That is. Portland University is. There was, there was a guy that quoted, you guys aren't using the numbers that come from Portland.
Okay. Population forecast from Portland State. Research ten. U G B forecast for all areas. Going down to. Lake County. Oak Ridge. Need my screen to. You screen on screen on Zoom or non, I apologize. Little one of the one. So twenty forty five. Four thousand three hundred twenty two. Exact numbers is now we announce.
Nice.
Yeah.
So. Wow, it looks to me like they did a pretty loud job on double checking their recycled work, the number is the same. From how we just saw we go to Portland State University, but go down their Excel sheet, it's the same number.
So so if somebody looks on there, is there another table for for communities without a U G B?
That's county.
Hmm?
That's that's county.
I know.
Right, so they're looking county numbers.
Right, so are they quoting the, is was the public quoting as county numbers, because they didn't.
No, it's the. For these numbers you see here on page five. Where it says three thousand and two hundred thirty eight was the people population in twenty one, that's incorrect. Another place where they're quoting incorrect numbers is the graph on the bottom, which shows three thousand four hundred five, three thousand four hundred fifty eight for twenty twenty. Though those are both incorrect numbers.
What is it say for twenty twenty, I can't, I'm near excited, I can't quite.
Twenty is three oh.
Three nine oh four?
Yeah.
Three three two eight. Which actually is higher than twenty one, which is three two three eight, so it could also be a fat finger today.
That's, yeah.
So it could either be recycled or they just, when they type it in. Because it is, it is reverse um.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So instead of three three two eight, they have three two three eight, so. The twenty twenty number is actually larger than the twenty twenty one number, which is incorrect here.
But it's going on the graph, okay.
But on the graph, there's definitely another number that um. Be honest, I don't know where that came from. I'm not gonna, I mean, I can't figure out for life, I mean, is that Western's number is added to, because we did Western at the same time? But did that, that math doesn't work either, so I I just think that is just. Format recycled, somebody messed up there um. But I guess the key figure here is. The twenty forty five population that was growth rate. That you have here in graph is the same one that comes from Portland State University.
I just wanted to that um. It it's it's worth recognizing that. The, you know, the technical appendices in the back of the H and A. Have all this really laid out, like what was driving the methodology for the forecast being? Based on a growth rate that's different than our historical growth rate in the census, which has been. One of the things that the community has been. Um stating that they disagree with, you know, that the last twenty years, we've only grown, you know. Point five seven percent. Um not five point seven percent, point five seven percent. Um and so I I think, you know, just recognizing that somewhere along the translation to um. There were different consulting teams that were writing the the analysis versus doing the analysis. And I think that's part of what led to some of the other sort of distrust of the data. Um but I think we should recognize that, you know, what PSU does is, you know. How they derive their projections isn't based on just the history. Um and I I think we need to. Really just. Understand that. We we aren't full-time paid demographers by the state of Oregon. Um but that they're using a lot of, you know, complex assumptions around household size, in migration, out migration. Um regional dynamics, it's 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 based on a a set of growth rates. Um and that, you know, I just want us to recognize like that. We, that's just one of the points that's sort of being cast as. Casting doubt upon this process, and I don't know if they think we somehow. Tell PSU what to do, um but again, I I think some of this is just. Us seeing this, understanding this, and and understanding that like, hey, there's different consulting teams trying to. Distill a bunch of information and to draw the right attention to the right meaningful takeaways. But that the fundamentals of the study are really sound, and um it's also a a methodology that's prescribed for every single community across the state. You know, we are not. Able to like tell consulting teams, no, we want you to. You know. Tell us there's five hundred more people that want to come here than is the reality, I mean, all this is is truly, you can trace it back. Point by point. Um again, people are gonna not do their homework or use AI to try and draw, you know, whatever uh um assumptions they they want from it. Um but I just want us as a commission to to know and recognize that. Uh this was built on a sound foundation, and you know, maybe they just had the wrong. Analyst writing the content that day. Um but, you know, we we. We can allow people to still be upset, even though there's not really necessarily a technical basis for. Any um any cause for error, so I just wanted to reassure you guys um to to Rick's point and going into this. That I really dug into this myself as well, and I I think they did. A great job and all of this is very transparent, so. That's all I wanted to say.
So in the last ten years. Actually, well, I've I've been a an intern, a state councilor, staffer, and laid off for two years, back to two and a half. Never once has PSU gotten our our forecasting right, not even close, if if it's never been right. And I think that's very important to understand, and it's very important to know. It is not the fault of PSU. It's the fault of Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge is not growing at the same rate, in the same pace as it should in comparison to the rest of Oregon. And I think that those inconsistencies are. Are more important than anything else to me because it just shows that. We're not doing what we're supposed to do, we are not bringing people to Oak Ridge. We are not the place people wanna move to. And those people, the difference in the P S U forecasting and the census forecasting highlight that clearly. Um, and could housing be part of that? Absolutely. Could the job market be part of that? Absolutely. Could the drive from Eugene though, Oak Ridge be part of that? Absolutely, there's a lot of things that could contribute to that. Some are gonna have control, some are not. Um, and I think these are one of the ones that, well, if we do rezone, we do it and having all the new choices. There's no guarantee anything's gonna happen, but again, to you, nothing will happen if we don't make sure changes. To open those doors. Uh, we will we will continue to always be short of the numbers, so um. Yeah, it's not P S U's fault, the grid doesn't grow.
My first picture I remember um that Oak Ridge was one of the few places that was surrounded. By national forests like on all sides, and I think that there was one other, I wouldn't say Detroit, but I'm not sure if there's one other town. In Oregon. And I wonder, you know, I wonder if you look at the statistic of those two in the growth rate, you know, what the common denominator and factor and and but that just points to.
Right, of something.
Much, oh yeah.
And and even if it's not the intensity, it's the increased. Housing choices, because right now, all you can, all we can do is single family housing. Uh, and and single family housing is being priced out of the market, you know, um. Selfishly, I'll admit, I have I have a son that's twenty six, I have a son that's nineteen. They both work full time jobs, they can't afford. Helping. Um, maybe if we had more places that were apartment sized, more places that were. A little bit lower on the price range, I'm not talking about sex, you know, I'm not gonna. Guys that are in there, you know, working forty two hours a week, you know. Busting their hand in the mill. They're not affording to have a house. We can't go and drive the market, but we can try to open doors that will. For both of provide less extensive housing.
That's an affordable word that nobody wants to hear.
That's right, that's important one that nobody wants to hear, unfortunately, we're at a spot where. Affordable housing has is is no longer a bottom class thing, it is now a middle class thing.
Even hard for middle class.
Right, right.
Really is, especially like if you're not already in the housing market, like, but you know. I guess I'm an elder millennial. Um, everybody who's a little bit, you know, in my my generation, but younger than me, if you didn't get into the housing market before twenty twenty, you're not in. You're not getting in and it doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter how much unless you're making a hundred and fifty plus or if if you're. Especially if you're a single um income in the house, like nobody is able to buy a house.
Right, it's yeah, right, you know, even even then, you know, I'm I'm definitely a uh. Gen C, but coming out with a lot of millennials by March. People just don't wanna go uh work fifty, sixty, seventy hours a week before they home they came to go to. So even if the market is not. Stable, not in good shape, people's attitude is changing. They don't want to devote their entire life. Pay that mortgage when all they can do is work, they can't go enjoy their home. So those ideologies are changing as well and maybe Oak Ridge needs to. Change with it, you know, a lot of the tourism base market we get, there's a lot of that. People as well, the younger, you know, um. Or sort of people that don't. Don't wanna spend all the time to afford that house, they wanna get out and enjoy life.
Yeah.
And without market so it says, you you just can't have growth anymore.
So there's. My uncle was telling me um that in nineteen sixty eight, when he graduated high school. Um. They had these. Finance classes, they taught people how to manage their money. Um. And the guy told them that you should never spend more than twenty percent of your income on your house.
You know, I'm kinda glad you touched that point, because if you look at the housing analysis. Look the incomes of of we have what uh almost half of our population is rent burden. Or mortgage burden, which means they're spending thirty to fifty percent of their type of their income, just put a roof over their head.
Right.
Um, so I I saw you have your.
Well, if if uh housing is unaffordable in Oak Ridge. Can you imagine Eugene Springfield? I mean, because the housing there has gotta be what, twenty percent, twenty five percent higher than here?
Absolutely.
I mean, this this has gotta be affordable as a as a starter place, if you had the income, if you have the job, go with it. Way to earn the money.
Right, but one of the things that I see in conversation that I've had with um other colleagues. Is whether you like to admit or not, if if unless you're working in in communities like ours, you live in communities more expensive to live in because. We're also adding on cost of.
Right, right.
Yeah, I do think Oak Ridge is right, though, I mean, like. Obviously, I'm a little bit biased towards it because this is what I do, but I'm pretty much a digital, like I could be a digital nomad, like. I just need internet and access to an airport and I can do my job and I think there's. So like. This is the type place that like, one of the reasons I live here is because my mortgage is so low that like, I don't have to work. All of the time, you know, I can take a month and a half off and and still afford my house. You know, and I just think that that's like an opportunity that we're, you know, missing out on by not being able to attract more people like. You know, um, they kind of have can have that lifestyle here. We should be a little bit more affordable here and I think we could draw more people with with people being able to work remotely if we did have more housing stuff here. Totally anecdotal, but a a lot of people that I talked to uh in Eugene Springfield, they're like, I almost moved to Oak Ridge, you know, I mean. Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, if we get the quarry, then housing prices.
But hey, we'll have two more jobs.
Yeah. Those will be important.
Yeah.
I want to say basically was almost five hundred jobs. Would you have a a company in Oak Ridge is just starting phase two, uh they sell trailers. Um, base phase one was sales, phase two was service and repairs. That building I just issued a building permit for about a week ago, um. So there are things that are happening, if they already have reached phase three. They're looking to employ five hundred people. That's awesome for a bridge, but.
How many?
Just about five hundred people, that's.
And then actually. Say again, I knew it, the the number of people.
Just like five hundred, it's been it's a long time to be talking about. I'm sorry, what was that? Did I say the number wrong?
Like, there's just, there's like literally not a way that they could build a facility to manufacture. What they sell on the land that they own, that employs five hundred people, is that what they've been saying?
I didn't have to go back and look, um, but. The the mill that you speak out there, I know it's a lot larger facility, but they have.
Right, but they don't, they don't. The whole mill, I'm I'm, they have like less than twenty acres. Like, I'm I'm just saying, like, I I would love two hundred. Like, I'm excited, I I love Texas pride, go for it, but I'm like, I hope they're not. Walking around saying that kind of thing, because there's just that, there's no way that's feasible, but. I I'm. On the economic development committee and I'm as anxious as anybody else to uh. Bring in employers, I just, I had never heard that figure and I'm just questioning it.
Don't say it's a hundred jobs. That's still.
That's a one acre parking lot.
And auxiliary jobs.
And then also.
Jobs.
Mm hmm. And. Can I put some perspective on all of this? Um, this is like the T S P over here.
Yes.
This is allowed minority. Trying to drive their agenda. And they they worked it with the T S P, they did. With T S P, I. I would swear that that was not the majority of this community's thoughts. Most of the community didn't really give a damn if they never buy. And 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 this, it's the same thing with this rezone. We come in here and. It's. A half a dozen households from. Oak Meadows is the majority of what's showing up here. At this meeting. And the majority of what's making all the noise. And so. I just think we need to keep that in mind, that. Well, you know. This is not minor, this is not the majority of the community, this is a small set of. People who are. I wanna say fear mongering, but that's maybe not the right.
No, but I mean, they are, they are trying to drive that home, I mean. Let's take the T S P for example, that was a big concerted effort about not having it go, well, guess what? O dot has to do it by twenty thirty, they're already in the planning stages of doing the road doc, because they're mandated that they have to have. Bike lanes and sidewalks on state highway, all state highways by twenty thirty, so. You know, that's gonna happen automatically, if we if the zoning, the zoning part that we're doing is just saying, yeah, you could. And like you brought up, Rick, is that ne- even now. Uh, we we all zone are are ones. The state has mandated that it has to be allowed to put in an auxiliary dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's not us doing that, right?
I see.
You know, and and for us, if we wanna get money. To do any kind of like upgrades. Um, for a particular area of town, well, then it needs to be designated at a higher density zoning. For us to even get funding to be able to do any kind of upgrade that would be required to support. Larger funding, so I mean, it's, you know, it's a lot of things that are just kind of stacked on top of one another. To get to the final end where we're saying. Sure, if you wanna come in, if you have somebody who wants to build a a place and has a business plan to market it and feels. They can they can justify their investment by building it in Oak Ridge, for them, why shouldn't they? Right?
So I think that's a update again, and I know this is not in Walbe, you do not remember, but I was just reading that the government was they were about to increase.
It is, yeah, it is in the session now.
Yeah, so the big interest.
So we might be here again.
Exactly, yeah.
So. Correct me if I'm wrong, um. Didn't House Bill twenty twenty one. Make it, um, didn't they mandate the city cannot. Under any circumstances, pay attention to C C N Rs.
Twenty twenty one or House of two thousand and one?
Yes.
Um.
Isn't, I I read that somewhere.
No new one, no new. Um.
But you cannot be responsible, you cannot. What I read was.
Answer, because whether that applies to ten thousand above or all cities, I would have to check. But I do know that the recommendation I showed you guys um their last work session, they come out of House of two thousand and one has a recommendation, we don't.
Right.
Um.
Well, it was actually um, it was strong wording saying that you couldn't.
I have to double check that.
Okay.
But. I still have a recommendation that we don't.
Mm hmm.
Um, for multiple reasons. Especially for um.
And that's what I was told when I got my permit. Was it because you. Initially, I initially submitted my permit. But I I questioned, so do you need to see that? What I'm doing or proposing. Is going to meet the C C N Rs. And I was told, no. We don't deal with the C C N Rs.
And that is correct.
It is not uh our ci- a city function, that is a function of. That neighborhood, whatever.
Doesn't break that.
And I was directed to, they have some sort of committee out there, you need to go find them. You need to submit your plans to them.
That that is correct, we only have it in our ordinance, I could only go walk in western ordinance, I um. And then to try to put uh. Try and match our ordinance with the C C N Rs. Is going to be.
Impossible.
Well, not only possible, but it's also gonna be uh the violation of of some of the sent bills.
Right. And the other point that. All might not be aware of is virtually every house out there violates the C C N R.
Well, also, the current code is not in line with the C C N R, because it allows for duplex and triplex on corner lots, so.
But I mean, every, virtually every house that has been built. Violates the C C N Rs in some way. Virtually everyone. My.
And landlords only not the only ones to have the the. The opinion, if you ask the building department, I was speaking with our building official the other day. And he gave me much story of how it's had people angry at him for issuing. Uh, status occupancy based on C C N Rs and that's not their bad either. Um, if it's not in our zoning ordinance, I can't enforce it, in fact, it's the the. I'm working.
Maybe put in a sidewalk. You wouldn't give me my.
So you're right.
But not that.
Anyway.
I'm talking about Frank's face.
So in my in my opinion, it is. Is the housing needs analysis, this faces this discussion maybe partially flawed, it could be. But is it? All garbage, I don't think so, and we have to prepare for. The best case scenario, not necessarily thinking of the worst case scenario. Um, just like you're saying, it's. Which which is it going to be if we. Don't allow for more housing or have more housing, is a business gonna come here or not? You know, I I think that's a very valid point. Um, and I don't think they're gonna come. Yeah. Because of. Partially because of that reason and lots of other ones, but. Um, you know, we have to prepare for the. Best case scenario. Yeah, and I think that that's what we're trying to do. My only concerns, I share with this, I've shared this with Rick, is that. We present something to the council that. Can get past the noise. Um, and not have it be a T S P thing where it it's all shut down. Um, because of a loud minority.
Yeah, and you know, and that's always been a problem, I mean, one of the things when I was on city council, I'm always thinking, well. Well. What, what are the, what are the people? That aren't saying anything, what are they saying, you know? I mean, you know, I actually took a job at Rage as a cashier so that I could meet everybody in town. It was my way of spending two, three minutes checking them out, you know, uh other groceries and talking to them and. You know, making jokes with them and trying to cheer them up when they were sad to find out just who the hell lives in Oak Ridge, right? Because when I came here. I was like, you know, basically, there was no dynamic that I could recognize. Right, so part of my job history was building team dynamics and and getting. Diverse teams to perform. Right, and so when I came here, I was like, oh, what the, you know, I was going, what the? What? Where is, where was the community? There wasn't a, you know, a like, you couldn't like go. It didn't come out and go smack, right? You had to look around and then you find out there's fifty communities and then they're talking to each other. Right, and so, um, you know, I always try to keep in mind that, you know, the people that aren't talking are probably the ones with the loudest voice. But we can't hear. And so when we're doing this, we're trying to be fair across the board, whether you're you're being being uh agitated by what we're doing or whether we can't even hear you. Because you're not here. You're not talking to us about them, but we're keeping you in mind. Because you may wanna redevelop your property and you may wanna expand that, you may wanna create an extra income. So that you can afford things and not have to to work fifty or sixty hours. Uh, a week, just to just to live, right? And um, so. Uh, the the problem that we're facing right now is how do we get through the public hearing? At a time and matter. So I'm really. I mean, there are gonna be people here who are gonna distract us. And that's what, that's how I see public comment at the beginning of the public hearing, that's what that's meant to do. For the people, that's meant to distract us from getting through the agenda. If we put the public comment at the end, then all they can do is point their finger and go na na na. But we got our business done. And maybe the business being done is something that they can appreciate.
I. Object to that, I think that. Part of our job is to is. To help this get to a place where once it goes to council. The people's like. Not uh. Objections have been alleviated, I think that's part of our job is to help bring them along in the process. And then by the time this gets to council, we have come up with a good enough plan, and I'm not saying that we. And I'm not saying that we say, okay, well, your section is mad, so we just get your section out. But like, we bring them along in the process so that they truly understand what we're doing. And like, I think that's where something's actually gonna get done. Um, because I think what, what it sounds like, what I heard you say is, is basically like, we don't have to take their. Opinions into account because we're gonna do what we're gonna do anyways, which. I know that's not exactly what you said, but like, there's a feel of that there. Um, and so I, I just think that like, we do have to be very cognizant of what they're saying. And try and help, help listen to their concerns and address those concerns through our process. And I think that's extremely important. I'm glad they're bringing up these concerns.
Let me, let me pause you, pause there because we're a quasi judicial group. Which means that we can only evaluate the program here, whether or not it falls in line. With the land use code. It has, has no personal, uh, investment in who, what people think of that. Is that the process that we have before us is, does it, does it, does it meet? The requirements for the land use. That's what we're adjudicating to. City council and elected officials can let popular put their, their constituents influence their decision-making process. But as commissioners are, we can't allow, uh, the public to influence our decisions-making based on just their opinion. Okay, we have, we have a responsibility to look at what is before us and, and judge that. Does it, does it meet the criteria of land use? Is it, is it properly being zoned? Is, you know, that kind of legal schmiggle side of the things where personal opinion is not an influence.
Yes, however, I don't think they think we're doing that at all.
I think there's an education.
Yeah.
So, so two parts to this. My opinion is, is one, you're never gonna get what you want. Because they're set and unless you give them what they want, they're gonna continue to make them. That's my life experience telling me that that's what's gonna happen. They're not gonna go, oh, so you did think about this? And, you know, they want what they want and they're gonna stomp their feet that they get. The other part to this too is, is that this is different from adjudicating something that's already in writing. We're looking at making a recommendation to change what's in writing. And so that, that, I think that's different than if, if we're adjudicating something that. Does this proposal meet what's in the book? Yes or no? Yeah, we're looking to change the book.
Right, but we're looking to change the book based on what land use allows us to change the book to. We're not just arbitrary, we're making stuff up, right?
No, we're not, but we're looking to change the book. I, I think that's. They don't want the book changed, we're looking to change the book.
So, um. The city council is the final.
Yes.
Say, and, um. And another committee I'm on, uh, the R T N P, James said, well, you know, the council is just gonna change it away. As far as who they allocate the money to, uh, they're gonna do whatever they wanna do anyway. And I don't believe that. I think we have a different council, it's a new day, and I think the council we have now will rely quite heavily. On the recommendations we give them, uh, because they, they're smart enough to know. That we're smart enough to have done the work that they didn't have to do. We're doing it for them. And I think that's the way they're gonna look at our recommendations. I don't think they're gonna say, oh, well, uh, you all considered that, that's very nice. But now we've got these people here who want something different. I don't think that's gonna happen. I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna endorse, endorse what we come up with. We'll see. If you have a new council now.
Right. Yeah, and all we're trying to do is make it fair for everybody.
Right, and I've been wanting to bring this up, um, and I'm hoping that Rick and Andrew, you can learn more about this. In the American Planning Association, I don't know, guidebook, policy, policy guy, I have to look up, or housing guy, there we go. There's like suggestions and labels and there's one G, and it is, it's all aiming towards increasing, um, density in options. And in one G, it specifically references in areas, and list a few things, this is particularly better culturally. Appropriate, and I know that, I know that's a gray area, it starts to not get into our black and white scenario that we've tried to stick to. But I'm very curious, um, how that's handled in the planning profession, uh, and if anyone has any thoughts or experience with that.
Those really significant should be something along those lines.
I know what you mean, um, the way it was written, I didn't take it that way, but, yeah.
So would cultural significance be like this is a historically black neighborhood kind of thing, or like, hold it up, so, um.
My life is very.
It's probably, probably what Portland's facing now, where they have cultural, cultural bias in a neighborhood. You know, there, there's something they're going through the same similar. Process of land use and it's.
So if, if it is, is this guidelines.
This is that, the A P A Housing, uh, Policy Guide. And then, uh. Yes, it was like their positions, right, so it is. As well, and it says they. Eliminating barriers to affordable and multiple, uh, multifamily housing development. And exclusionary zoning rules and practices, especially in areas where such development is supported by the necessary transportation. Social, cultural, utility and economic infrastructure. And I just, you know, for, in my mind is, what if that's, how is that, you know, what, what are the practices?
Right, that's something good for you to be used, statement.
Yeah. But anyway, I mean, my point to that about the semi judiciary, that, you know, there is some subjectivity, um. In selecting the criteria.
That we can use here.
Yeah.
Because this is a legislative, not by the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so if this was part of that judicial hearing, or when we do get a part of that judicial hearing. Uh, the only criteria that you'll be able to judge by is what's in our document. Doesn't matter what A P A says, or what A P A says, if it's not my document or it's, it's not ours to. But which is, but that's not what we're doing, right?
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you for the clarity on that. So, so here we can, let's say, we're, we're creating this criteria.
That's right.
And so can we put, the whole goal is can we create something? That we can stand by and that will pass. I mean, that's the goal, right? We don't want it to be thrown out, um.
No, yes, I mean, that's part of, you know, maybe, you know, we've been approaching it as more in a pragmatic fashion. Whereas we're looking at, at specific criterias and they're getting a weighted number. To say, yeah, this is, this is, this area is more beneficial because X, Y, Z, this is less beneficial because. A, B, C, um, and, you know. In a way, we're looking at part of, part of the planning process is to try. And I guess that that's where the, the distance from the features comes from. Is that, you know, walking distances from, you know, so if you have a higher density neighborhood, then it should have. Should have, be able to support itself within walking distance, people should have to drive. And so forth. That's pretty much, those distances are pretty much, uh, they can, so you know, it's Oak Ridge, right? So when you get down to it. Um, but, you know, there is possibility. So now we know that we have to allow E D U on regardless. Um, but, you know, we do have the ability now to bring, uh. More density into areas that has, when in our case, we've looked at it from a supportive infrastructure standpoint. And as a part of its relative location to a goods, basically goods and services and transportation and, and all that stuff. So I think that's where we're getting to now. So we're not singling out a specific neighborhood. We're saying, these are the neighborhoods where it is best supported. These would be the neighborhoods that would, it would make, make sense from our pragmatic viewpoint. To, to allow zoning changes to increase distance, density. Now, that. Is, now you have the people who are there who say, no, I don't want you to change my zone. Because they believe that as soon as we change its zone, then people are gonna start clamoring to build higher density. Right? And so, you know, generally, when we have businesses coming in for conditional use permits, we're not supposed to. Judge their business, the model, right? As far as, are we supposed to take into consideration that their business is whacked? You know, in our opinion, or are we just supposed to say, okay, it, it, it meets what we have on the books and so you can have a conditional use permit? So now we're, now when we're changing all of it. There, what is the overarching criteria that we use to make that evaluation? And we can only make that evaluations from physical things that we have. I mean, we don't live in that neighborhood necessarily. We don't have, uh, predominant feelings about. Any neighborhood being better or worse than the other. What we're saying is that based on what we can see and what we can theoretically have the city support. This makes sense to, to re, uh, classify these areas. And along with the reclassification, you know, there, you know, the gray area there is, that do we go move right into rezoning? And the answer is yes, because that way individual lots can't rezone themselves as we go along. And so I think that's where we're coming from. We're seeing people who are, who are basically panicking because they feel that. Uh, this is gonna create. Uh, you know, an influx of low-income people. Well, you know. I don't know where they've been all these years, but the state used to tell lo- low-income people to come to Oak Ridge. Cause there weren't any jobs and they could stay on their benefits. They didn't have to go looking for a job. They used to send people here. Because of that. Right? So how do, how do we move past that, right? So if we don't have jobs and we don't have workforce housing. If we create a situation where we can develop, uh, an opportunity for workforce housing. Then that kind, will kind of change the, uh, the metrics by how Oak Ridge is viewed. By businesses coming in from the outside. And whether people like it or not, they initially won't. Because it changes the whole dynamic that they use to come. Does that make any sense?
That's true, mate.
Yeah, that makes sense, Kevin. And when you buy a house, that doesn't mean that the entire town stops moving moment that you buy it.
It's always better to use quantitative data than qualitative data. And I would like, you know, I think we're, we've done a pretty good job of using quantitative. And guys, we're clear, false data, because maybe it was a chart of the bed.
I feel like that's what they're, would say needs to be done. What precedent?
You have to say when you weren't.
Exactly. There ain't always was. No, there's, I mean, a real precedent, um, just like most field training is evolving, it definitely stand in the past.
And so is that our segue into the night of reform?
It should be a good one.
My question is with the housing needs analysis though, like, do we have any recourse to go back to the consultant and be like, hey, can you fix these small mistakes for us?
Probably could, I mean, but it'd be, but it's, we, yeah, absolutely, um.
Throw it back at them, they can fix it.
Okay.
Great.
Just while we're growing.
Agreed.
Our impression is that end number isn't gonna change. The end number is still the, the forecast.
It is, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, no, those, like, we're.
So just to clean up.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, that way.
Well, I mean, don't leave any obvious error. So I'm, you know, and when I, when I was working, one of the things we used to do is leave an obvious error. All right, because people, people, we would take our production drawings and we'd send them, somebody was supposed to check them to make sure they were right. Well, sometimes they didn't even look at. And so we would leave it and see if they find it. Right, cause that's the job, is to find that error.
We should.
And, and so, I mean, we have, we have the authority to fix those errors and we're glad that people are, it shows that people are actually reading it. But happy about.
Yeah, but I think it would go a long way into building trust and we send it back to the people who created it. Ask them to fix the errors and then we're moving forward from a place of like a clean slate. And yeah, we can.
So you propose that we put this off for months more? Waiting for these people to go back and fix an error that's not gonna change at the end number anyway?
No, I'm, because this has to be incorporated into the, the comprehensive plan, right? And we can't incorporate something into the comprehensive plan that we know is broken, right? So I'm just suggesting that like, while we are working on this.
Housing needs analysis wasn't our, our thing, it's the city council.
Well, there's no reason I can't say.
Right, I just, I know you can't, but I'm just saying is, housing needs analysis didn't come through. Planning, meaning it came through city council. As an issue, no?
Right, but it got tied in when we went into the zoning changes.
Sure.
Right, so, I mean, so this brings up a point is, is that a scrivener error that?
Pretty much, yeah.
Pretty much, so, so since, you know, and so how do, how are we going to handle scrivener errors? Yeah, exactly.
But not expecting it changes.
No, but we do need to have a correct document to work off of, yeah.
Yeah, I think they must do a scrivener, up to the back of them and say, okay.
Yeah, but it should also be, yeah, but it should.
Work up, that tells me that you wanna wait, see, I'm hearing you wanna wait to. Move forward with this.
No.
No.
No, I do think though that we can clarify to the pub, it's more, it's more to help the public come along with us. That we are not moving forward with a document in error. So we can say to the public, hey, we heard you. There is an error in this document. Thank you for pointing that out. We are gonna go back to the consultant, we'll have them fix that. But we do know that this is the Portland State number, show them that. So now we can move forward because we are in the correct number that we have to be using is this Portland State number here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would go a long way, yeah.
Yeah, we heard you.
We're asking consultants to correct their error because we pay good money for this work. And we'll get that later, but we're still gonna proceed.
Yes. Great. We got some more.
So we should actually think that there are no other scrivener errors in the document. Right?
Um.
Quit recycling. So what are we gonna explore as far as the options, where?
What's that?
We said, item four.
Yeah, I had a big question mark on that too.
Yeah. It was just kind of, uh, it's no different than last time we did this work session, it's still the same. Information unless you all want to say. You wanted a quantifiable thing that we can adjust.
Well, um, can we, can we adjust the, the bus run?
The what?
Can we adjust the bus front?
In what way?
That it comes down commercial.
You mean adjusted that with the bus company?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I mean, let me preface that, more than likely, yes.
I mean, because here's the problem.
We have had it through us, it hasn't been adjusted since it been here.
Yeah.
Um, this, the route is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's malleable. So, I mean, cause that would, that would, would not force us to reconsider commercial street properties. Because they're being downgraded because they're not on the bus stop.
They're. But there's some that are, we're showing a higher score than we should because of the barrier of the road. Is my, like, one of my issues. Uh, let me find that.
Was there a printout during, how much, during last time of the new year?
Yeah.
Um, but there is no new title now.
Are you gonna be able to share that?
I was interested in the final map.
Now we get mobile way, that's the, that's.
This one here is the everything scored.
It could have just cleaned it both by work and nature.
Oh, the final recognition?
Yeah.
That one was important in any power play.
But the planner's choice.
Yeah. I mean, something, something came up somewhere about offering, being able to offer a variety. And that's my question for experience in with you. And or Rick, is, I mean, do you want to offer a variety of experiences where there is the option for this? You know, of what exists now, um. I'm not sure where. What is the variety of experiences? So do you? And I wanted to see the final map to kind of see, like, is there, do we really have a place that? A single family is half.
That's a stat recommendation.
Yeah.
Question. That loss, that little undeveloped area of Dorian Rapids.
Yes.
Is um the reason that it didn't get? Because my mind is kind of like crying for. Yeah, but why is uh?
It was not developed yet.
I know, but I know, but it doesn't have any fire extinguishers on it. Is that why it didn't get as good a score as some of the other areas?
It'll be done back in the scores, just talk that one to get a previous score.
I thought it got a pretty good score, too, but.
It's showing, it's showing high density.
Okay, good, good, good. Somehow is, um.
Okay, because there is, there is one duplex over there. Yeah, currently, yes. Yep, and a lot, and does.
So that big large one, it's number makers. It has a sugar in it, or the housing market crash. The developer, I mean, we never received, we had those first, and then passport today, the knowledge of where those are.
Oh.
So.
I walked through there once and looked at all that.
The conduits.
It does, it does make a lot of sense as far as accessibility, because they get a school alcohol and jump on fifty-eight. Or they can go down and go on fifty-eight to Highland across from Greenwater's Park where they're not grapes and up and down West Oak. Right, you know.
Right, so that one is um is one of the high.
So what do we wanna look at?
Yeah, um.
I mean, we've, we've already narrowed out in your, in your staff, technically, we've taken out natural hazards, right?
Yeah.
And, but you introduced some small areas, correct?
Slope are natural hazards.
Uh, yeah. So that takes out elements, right?
Uh, a lot of it, not a lot, um. Fortunately, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you, right, when you slope to these ones, uh, the hash are natural hazards. If it is slow. Even though in this, in the staff, they have been going over some things, some of those slope ones did people back in, the slope is a deal breaker, it's just, it just. And so we still weren't pressing with them the house on that.
Or if they, well, also, I mean, I think that's like a market-driven thing, right? And so if somebody wanted to put, you just said, single family, if somebody wanted to put like a fourplex on something with a slope, like, I don't see why we should exclude somebody from trying to build that, like.
Right, and it starts marketing, probably there are. We return the best will be better. Absolutely.
Then it would actually lower the cost of it?
Not to build it, but if you have, if you're, let's say you're building a home to be rented, not, not your own personal home. But if you're building, building a home to be rented on a slope, uh, your return investment is gonna be greater if you have four people that are paying rent very well.
Hmm, right, yeah. So shouldn't you take out slope? Which, yeah.
When we take out slope completely, um, we definitely do that.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I'm just curious, like, you know, testing that. Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of bigger lots that we're excluding because they have a slope, whereas like we could let the market decide if they wanna build on that or not. Um, and I just think that like the larger lot lends itself better to higher density than smaller lots. And we've, we've got a ton of these like little tiny lots that are designated identity off here, off of Rainbow Road, that like, that absolutely makes you have sense to like, put tiny lots in it.
But with that, it does still make sense, so it's a redevelopment thing. Uh, and some of the houses have already, if you have a three or four-bedroom house, um, if the owner goes through, they could be modified to duplex, even as they say right now.
Yeah.
Don't have to, yes, a vacant lot does bring us better chances, but a lot with a resident on right now is uh, deal breaker. They, we still add a, we still add a detached, detached duplex or ADU. Um, there's still options for info.
Right, and our duplexes on Rainbow Road right now. Townhouses.
Yeah, but that's a medium density, not high density.
Thanks, folks. Well, that conversation was.
Well.
So.
Yeah, sorry, but specifically, yeah, um.
So I think that we're getting into infills, right? And into existing neighborhoods and with that, if the, if we're going to rezone those existing neighborhoods to let infills expand the amount of living units, right?
But can you explain infills?
So you have a, you have a older house there that somebody tears down, but you still have a lot.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna put in an infill, you're gonna infill it with a new, new, new building, right? And so part of the rezoning structure would allow that new building to have multiple living units in it, right? Rather than before, or they're gonna remodel the existing home to create more living units, right? So that's what we would go with, it's only going our one or two or three, right?
And ADU is another good example of, of info.
Okay, yeah. I think, just my specific, like, looking at this map, the largest lots seem to be zoned loads.
Oh.
All of the big lots.
Which one? The yellow ones?
We all the yellow ones, all these large.
Those don't also score low because there's no infrastructure.
There's no infrastructure on.
Oh.
There's one on Laurel Beer, right?
Yeah. Okay.
It's very steep, yeah.
You think that was crosshatched, was taken out. But, yeah, those crosshatched ones that are this up top.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this big guy here, maybe there's not infrastructure there, I'm not sure. I mean, it seems like if there's infrastructure here, is.
But continued across the road.
Okay.
There's no infrastructure on the other yellow one, so.
Okay.
So currently, like in Almetto, your infrastructure is like, there's an infrastructure on Google Loop and the houses that are current are there. That's the extent.
Because they were taken out.
The, the lots that we said divided off. He's finally putting in the water and stuff down there.
So my idea, if you wanted, we would, um, just have market deals, so to then, then slow back into the equation.
I mean, if it's, if it's the thing that's taking out all these large pieces of land, I mean, that's where you wanna put high density is on a larger lot. So like, if we're rezoning all these small lots to high density, we have less chance of somebody building anything.
Depends on size of developer, I mean, I, I have to disagree, I think.
Okay.
Uh, one large developer could compare to, you know, a handful of people who um, have an opportunity to rebuild their home to something to do flex or ADU. I, I think that they're.
That's, that's medium density, well, our one is ADU, so, right?
Our one is, no, our ADU is all, all.
Right, so starting at R one, ADU, so that's fine. And then medium density.
Fourplex.
Is up to a fourplex, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, and that's our two, uh, I just think that like but if we want some high density, we should give a few, like, this, so, these smaller lots um, are fine for medium density, right? But like, a high, high density is, is above four, I think you need a larger, like.
Well, you need a seven thousand square foot lot as opposed to a five thousand square foot lot, so there's. There is.
I think what you're trying to get at is, is a criteria that we really didn't go into or explore, and now it's, you know, lot size.
Um, yeah.
So there, there are these huge pound home complexes up in the hills in Eugene. Never built in the seventies when things were cheap and built, but still, um, a situation like that, you could have real high density with, on a slope. And it would be appealing, I mean, they're upper end.
I think difference, it's, so it's slope limiting factor is the question, because that's actually a limitation for the developer, not the city, correct? Yeah.
And, and you know, and, and when you get down to it, there's, there's no, no services in the street, that's also a developer thing.
Yeah.
You know, he can be, he can have, he can have to pay for sewer water, storm, storm water and sidewalks and all that stuff is on his bill. That hasn't been done here, and there's been no service connection charges that were charged for hooking up. Uh, but, you know, going forward, I think that that kind of infrastructure, uh, the city should dictate the details by which it's built, but the developer pays for it.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and that's funny, well, we, we, we actually paid up, we put those lots with them, said that he had to put in.
That's right.
Water in the, that, or we're, subdivision.
Right, but what we're talking about, so, so right now, a lot of these large what seemingly large lots are really large parcels that have not been split into lots. Right, they're just a field that somebody bought and they're sitting on, right? Uh, and it's inside our city limits, right? So, I mean, so it's not, so right now, if it's a subdivision, then the developer has to put in all the infrastructure. But if it's not in the subdivision, then he, then there's a kind of a gray area. Then it becomes like a conditional use kind of a thing, where they, if you wanna build here, then you gotta sit in all this stuff. Where in reality, if we're gonna be changing some of this stuff, we should make it consistent across the board, is that, you know, any new construction on any vacant plot that is missing any kind of utilities or infrastructure needs to be put in by the developer as a mandatory process.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that I agree with it. Um, and I don't know that we wanna actually have that be the baseline assumption for why we may or may not include a parcel. Because, I mean, if you're out in the county and you wanna do a subdivision, you can put in a, a pit or some kind of a utility district. But if you're putting it in a city that has city water, I, I just wouldn't assume that the developer's going to put it in, or wouldn't assume that the city would at least have a role to play if the city's gonna be long-term providing the operations and maintenance of the infrastructure. Like, I, I mean, we can talk about impact fees, but I, I just I don't think, especially because like later down the line, let's just say somebody what does actually wanna develop one of these, that doesn't have infrastructure. I mean, I'm kind of just following with, with Megan's comment here, that if, if a parcel is large enough, it should be still on the table. And we don't have to decide who pays for it right now, but that we shouldn't add the additional barrier of having them go through a conditional use permit process. Just because what, we decided today without knowing twenty years from now what's gonna happen, whether or not someone should be able to do it, because if this works and we actually do start promoting any kind of development, that type of thing will be more likely. And we'd be in a different revenue situation overall, so I, I mean, it's not a hill I wanna die on, but I'm just saying, like, we should be considering parcel size as, as an opportunity. And, uh, and the fact that it doesn't have infrastructure today, I don't think is, in my opinion, enough reason to, um, to ax it.
What about wildfire risk?
The whole city can.
I know, I'm not, but it, it does vary across.
Yeah, we didn't put that in there.
We kind of did.
We did.
We're a city, we have a, we have a water system.
Sure, I mean, but when we were, when we were, um, scoring these, we didn't have a score.
For the wildfire, for the wooly, that's because the whole town is in the wooly, the entire, the entire community, if we're gonna continue that, we're gonna use the wooly, we might as well just push off. The wildland urban.
Oh, yeah, not the wooly, there, there's, there's specific, you know, map that was included. I don't know, I mean, the map can be used for certain purposes and things, but.
It's not supposed to.
Right, right.
You know, supposedly you do for insurance, but I'm sure they are. But.
For the city of Oak Ridge.
For medium to high.
Yeah.
And the only ones that are high are down Long River. Um, if I recall, they, they were across from, they're in an area that was already taken out, but like.
It's spotty, I mean, I, I, I agree, I mean, the first iteration when I was looking in Westburg was, you know, one house was not ended in the next one. Well, it's a bad, and we didn't do this, you put it in the spot, so I don't know if we could, I don't know, it's just a very girl factor in my opinion, um. I mean, higher density is gonna be, I guess. I'm also, what, what, technically, with how many lots or how much area do you have to like put together into a designation for it to not be like spot? Because it's seems like there's like this weird area down like Rainbow Road and State, like, there's just like a couple of houses that are like not included. Maybe that's right next to the lap, I don't know.
Hmm.
Um, like, uh, between garden off of State?
Oh, State, yeah, there's a big warehouse at the end of that.
Yeah, but then there's like, all of this in here is, what's that?
My area.
Well, I'm just saying that there's like a chunk of things that are zoned high density on the east side of it, there's a chunk of things that are so high density on the west side of it, and why are these few houses that are right here meet like medium density?
So it's cool on State Street.
They were, they were back in the twenties. On State Street.
Okay. But then, but does that get into spot, like designation? Okay, but what, what constitutes that then? But what what constitutes that then?
Or you just said it's inconsistent with the surrounding area. So it's pretty ambiguous. In all rights, one of the things that's non. Residential related that. I'm tagging to the end of this. Is that blank area in the middle? That's right now is zone, um, it's it's only two parcels, but it's zone. Single family or low density residential. That's the one I'm trying to say, that need to be. One of the things that I'm probably gonna be paying up is that we rezone them.
Yeah. No, and I'm just, I was just making sure that like we weren't doing something, because we're looking at this math and seeing if there's anything incorrect, and so I just saw this like little pocket of houses. That seem different from everything around it, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something incorrect there.
So that one scored lower because we're lacking utilities, there're only two inch water ran going down that street.
Okay.
How many houses on that street?
I think it was.
Were there any changes that you see on the staffs? Matt? That you wanna? Well, I mean, are we gonna say that we wanna like, we just move forward with this?
Can't make that decision tonight, but we definitely some recommendation.
We're not voting on the decision tonight. I'm just saying is that if there isn't any, any other. Changes to staff, yeah, I mean, here would be the time to make changes to the staff pick map.
Yeah, I think living, removing slopes so that the larger lot sizes. Have the ability to put high density on them.
Yeah, so my only concern initially was that. When we were looking at. The different designations were super high over what we need for high density to. Meet the criteria with the house need for those. And and in that concern. That I had. Again, it was the noise level, because once we move this to. The council. The noise level is gonna go with it. And um, Gary. Seems to feel that um. The council will take our recommendation. Pretty heavily. Um, but I I didn't get reelected to the to the city council because I voted for the T S P. And and that was straight up. That's why I didn't get reelected.
That's why we're here now.
And 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 I. I I don't know that because when the council was going down the rabbit hole, they did. I stopped participating and watching, I I just couldn't take it in.
Yeah, I don't mind.
And so I. I don't know what the council would do, and that was my concern is that. Are they going to be politically motivated? To try to quiet the noise and reject our recommendation, or will they take our recommendation the harder than? We we did put in the work that we are putting in. And uh, and whatnot. And so I. In in that respect, it was how do we justify what we're doing, we're way over the amount of. Uh, area that we need to meet. The city's goal.
Right, but. We can't, uh, I don't think that we can necessarily truly pick. I mean, so. We're gonna overzone.
Would would Rick? Initially came back with whatever criteria. You know, that was part of that. I think, especially because I had the discussion with him.
Do you guys think that the next step for us to be would be defining? How big a lot needs to be to be done to certain classification, I mean, because that's something that we haven't. We haven't examined yet, I mean, so right now, most of the R ones are. Five thousand square feet, and most of the ones that we have right now available for our twos or seven thousand square feet and above, so. This would, this would uh, leverage the current five thousand square foot lots into a higher density classification. By allowing duplexes and in some cases triplexes. You wanna keep corner lots in there, Rick?
Rick, you had mentioned the other day that. Our one. At some point would also allow like a duplex that.
That isn't, oh yes.
That's in what we're recommending.
Yeah, and that's something we'll talk when we get to um, the person we see.
But I think what, I mean, what we're looking at though is when we have a target, and especially when we assign a new uh. Land or sorry zoning to an existing lot. I mean, the odds of that, you know, you can't expect infill to take place. You can't assume that that hundred percent of infill, I don't even think you would say fifty, particularly when you're looking at existing lots.
I know, we can't assume anything.
And so that's when you're going, you're going over whatever amount of, and then there's also a better chance we're looking at a. New development in those larger lots, you know, probably have a higher percentage.
Right, I mean, so it's like, it's almost an impossibility to say that. We need two hundred and eighty-five more homes, right? Okay, so we're only gonna rezone for the two hundred and eighty-five now. So we're gonna rezone the whole area. Right, and where are those two eighty-five land, it's where they land. So, you know, there's no way that we can get away from that. Uh, overzone. Right? So the only, the only place where we can put the brakes on is by defining what that lot size, you know, lot size needs to be.
I think we can look harder at um, at grade and slope. Is that something that it would not be the city's responsibility? It's within the private right of way. And it does, you know, pretty dramatically. Increase construction costs, you know, you don't just run into. Building on and having to, you know. Level it, if that's what you're choosing to do, but runoff and stormwater mitigation. Retention issues, you know, it it causes all kinds of other downstream issues. Became a little bit more conservative on that. We could. You know, that would be, I think, a strong technical basis to um. To adjust our criteria.
Well, well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that there's no, no special case for coping in this case, and we're just talking about. Uh, you know, what's, what size of lot is gonna support what density of. Of uh, living minutes. So, you know, granted, you know, there's a lot of those, those zones, those uh, slow plots are big parcels, so that. That doesn't, doesn't, doesn't really, they can be done wherever we want. I mean, that could be our threes, you know, for that matter. But R three is still allowing you to downgrade. I mean, you could build an R one on an R three zone.
You can't, I just think you're gonna have a better chance of getting.
Oh no, I hundred percent agree with that, right, so. But when we're going through these existing neighborhoods, there are some lots that are smaller than five thousand. Right, and so, or or, you know, even though they're smaller than five thousand square feet. In the, an area where we're zoning them R two, right? There's still, there's still, you still build R ones and R twos. But are we going to be, going to be defining uh? What is a legitimate square footage of a lot to support a density? When they got setbacks.
You do the math to make it work.
I think that the, no. People can buy multiple lots and and build. You know, you can just acquire up to five acres if they're all next to each other, and people do that, you know, it makes it harder when you have to accumulate. You know, parcels on a block or something like that, but. I mean, my, my point going back to like. You know, how we narrowed down the field to get this set of parcels was really just to Megan's point that like, well, we we chopped a bunch off early. I don't think it's a useful framing to sit and and think about. What's the right? Lot size in terms of square footage to support density. Because I, I mean, like I just said, you can have multiple lots. Build them all together. And and I I I just don't think that's like. It's 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 just navel gazing for no reason, I I feel like we we can. Find just a a very, one of the other criteria. And just tighten it up. You know, I I think if we just. Again, stick to a technical basis, because again, the 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 lot size, it's gonna be a rabbit hole. You know, because you you can go to freaking Manhattan and and take a half acre and put eighty floors on it. Okay, so like, what we're talking about here is actually, we keep saying high density, really high density, because we have three classifications, but I'm like. None of these are that high density. Right, we're not talking about skyscrapers. Really, even if it's a very large parcel, you're still probably talking about someone not going higher than two or three floors, it just means they can, you know, spread out more. But with parking and 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 slope and things like that, it's just gonna naturally. Narrow anyway, I I agree that we are likely to get developers in one single large parcel, but that doesn't need to be the criteria for how we allocate. Um, these zoning designations.
What's your recommendation on that?
The ideal criteria that we should be looking at that will. Um, that will just yield more uh. Conservative approach and and reduce density in areas that. Are just not likely to see hi- higher density development anyway, so we may as well just keep them R one. Would be to just, you know, we we have a a twenty percent, is that, is it twenty degrees?
Twenty, twenty percent is a cutoff, yeah. And and I chose that number because it's twenty percent slope. Uh, it it affects the. What the study's gonna do on the soil for a building permit.
Right. I I think we should just look harder at that, maybe go with ten, fifteen, something like that. And just see what the map looks like.
Are you saying you want to reduce, like, to make it? So I don't, I don't understand this slope, what, you wanna make it even harder to build, or you wanna take out more slope factors?
Saying we're, 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 we're not likely to get as high of 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 an investment, um. If it's a super sloped area anyway, so we may as well just, again, we're, we're trying to hit a number. But I don't think that needs to be the the driver of how we're making decisions, I I think what we're really hearing is overall. People are overwhelmed by, you know, the, the. Percent of residential lands that are changing classification to higher density, you know, R two and R three. So, the mitigating solution in my mind is just find a way to balance the score and and. Just keep more things R one, if we can do that, which I'm I'm. Just wanting to explore it, you know, see what uh, Rick can do, and if it's not worth it. And it doesn't yield, then we can go down that other rabbit hole, but.
Right, so, so I think dude, one of the questions that that brings up is that, granted, people can buy multiple lots side by side and make a higher density unit out of it. But you know, when we're, when we're talking about reclassifying particular neighborhoods, not. You know, if you're gonna buy five R one lots. Yeah, are you gonna, you're gonna put in a multiple unit complex, which has been pushing it up into an R three area? I mean, so how are you gonna, what's the scalability on the zoning then, you, if that's your way of thinking, then why don't we just make it all R three?
No, that's not what I.
Yeah, it's the opposite, he wants more R one on this map. But I feel like slope, why, I don't see why that's the, that's, to me, that's the one criteria that doesn't match all the other ones. Personally, because that's the limitation of the developer, not the city.
Well, we're not saying it's the city, we're just saying it. We were looking at it from the standpoint of initially affordability.
Sure, but but why are you making the judgment?
It was just, it was an initial judgment based on affordability. I I think that we've already taken all the slope units out.
But then they get put back in.
They did not get.
Yeah, a few did just even think that's what we. They were, they were picking out.
Do we even need to be looking at reducing the designated land changes? Think that this is going to get to the city council as it is.
I think my.
Think it's. Pretty fair across the board, really.
I just think that like. If a lot of this is. Unparceled out. There's gonna be a whole lot less pushback about putting. New stuff in an area. Instead of changing people's current neighborhoods. And so if we're taking away this area that isn't gonna change the characteristic of neighborhoods, I think that's a win for everybody.
Changing the designations of those who.
No, I'm not talking, I'm just saying we have all of this area that. Isn't built on yet, and that is what we've left as R one. And that seems wrong as to what we're doing here, it just seems so much easier. For a developer to come in somewhere where there's not already stuff on the ground. Instead of buying up a whole bunch of lots.
I'm just talking about the, the lots that were eliminated for lack of.
No, we're talking about the undeveloped parcels. You know, we can tell those, it's R three, it's right.
No, but there's some of them that were taken out because of slope, and I'm objecting to the ones that were taken out because of.
Well, I understand that, but, yeah.
So if there's no infrastructure there, yeah, I get, let's not like, put that into high density, however, like we have these large parcels. That are, are they undeveloped?
This is the, they, they.
So like, all of this here, that's taken out is.
Undeveloped.
Yeah, it's undeveloped and it's left as R one.
And it's uh, right now, it's because it's currently R one.
But we've left it as R one, and everybody's problem is that we're changing their neighborhoods when we could say.
Can you just? One show on the.
Oh yeah, so those, there's no, there's no, those will still score low because of the lack of structure.
Then all, all of this is slowed down as well?
That one's got, that's really noisy.
Okay, it's lack of infrastructure, like, I can understand that, but it just does seem like we're.
I mean, that was based on our weighted scores, that's how those fell out, right?
No.
It'll change a little because. You you're right, when the way the sport started. Everything that we we decided, everything that was twenty percent greater slope. Was pulled out.
Okay.
And then all the scores will apply to what was left.
Oh, I see.
So that will change the scores considerably. They still like coming out low because you're not gonna have no construction, but it will change for.
I mean, it just seems that we should consider it a place where somebody could actually build something new versus.
Maybe we don't wait scores on those, we just automatically move them up. Well, then we just make them R three.
We want to be consistent in the methodology.
Yeah, let me say methodology.
I mean, cause they're gonna they're gonna fall low on other other score points.
They're gonna fall low, yes.
So I mean, we've already we've already. I didn't say we weren't going to do it because they weren't didn't have any infrastructure. We're we're now reporting infrastructure concerns that they are not a concern. Then, so we have the opportunity to rather than go through and wait score those, it's just. Just make them high density.
Where those who scored low is gonna be infrastructure, where they might not score low, you know, or scored where they don't have. At the moment is distances parks. And some of the stuff, because those are different, are not in the equation of the ones you hashed out. Because we pulled it up. Pulled them out to either scoring one.
All right, but I mean, you know, as we as we grow, green space is gonna have to be redeveloped. Areas are gonna have to be redeveloped as parks. Right? You have areas now that were initially designated as parks that have. Fallen to the cracks, right? Then they have houses on. So so I don't think that that's uh uh uh, you know. Could even enter into these ones that we automatically pulled out. That we're now discussing being back in, or already discussing having them put back in as high density.
No, that's not the impression I'm getting, I'm getting.
That's the impression I'm getting.
Well, you know, this is how I'm reading from here. Is you're getting put back in, they're gonna be scored like everything else. And let's see how it's working out. Um, I'm also hearing of introducing a new score. For lot size, which I don't know. Because anything can be sub divided. Um, so.
I'm not sure if the lot size particularly matters to me, I'm just seeing that like. It just seems like we've excluded some places based on slope that like we don't necessarily have to deal with because the market will deal with. That, and if any of those do come back and have a good score. Then like that is a better chance of somebody actually buying up that lot and putting some high density on it. So I just think we need to give ourselves that advantage. And I also think it's the it's like. If if we can find some places where we're not um. Yeah, I I think just allowing for. I think. It might minimize some fear if there is somewhere else for people to build that isn't changing somebody's neighborhood.
Good point. And I know, and these are perfect examples of of cases where. The these will support high higher density. Units. Right? And and. What is, what are they gonna be scored on? Because they, you know, if they don't have infrastructure, then infrastructure will have to be put in. If they're, you know, if there's no no bus route out there, then well, eventually bus routes may have to be changed. And and if there are distances to parks, well, then parks may have to be brought into the occasion on that. Not necessarily a criteria for these, this this high density build, but eventually, you know, just for the, you know. Lack of balance of people that live there. Right? They're gonna have to have some access to some kind of green space, whether it's walking across the street and walking into the forest or whatever, but. You know, you have the opportunity now is that you're bringing it back on the table. And you you don't really necessarily need to score that. Because they're already large. They've already have 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 uh. Had some criteria initially that were that we we eliminated them, like no infrastructure. So regardless of who we bring these in at high density. It still doesn't make any change to the score. You have the opportunity just to take these large parcels. We can make them R threes. And 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 be and say, look, you know, we didn't change any of the neighborhoods we found vacant land. That that we feel that's within R three limits that are is developable. But was the develop the developable land as higher density.
You're saying circumvent the rating system.
Yeah, and I I so basically, we're talking about. These lots right here, right?
Right, yeah.
Right, if we just say, hey, go to Big Rock, we're gonna call them. We're gonna call them R three. Then everything else has gone away.
Yeah, that's not what I.
I think we should do is bring them back in and score them appropriately. Is that score properly, but I can tell you that this one and this one. Will and these will score low, it won't score high at all. Because there is no structure of streets, there is. All that's left is the distance buffers.
Yeah, I just think it's a good. I mean, I hate to make us go through an exercise here, but I think it's like if I'm pointing this out, right, I think that it's just something that. Is. Look, I'm not a map expert, but like it looks pretty flawed to me, you know, right? And so like if we say we, well, we just excluded it because of this, I think we just like. We have to do this right so that we can defend this. And so if we say, okay, well. We allow for slope. Because the developer can decide whether like they can make money on this or not, right? Um, but we excluded it because there's no.
I mean, if we're talking about, if we're talking about the the missing housing. The two hundred and some odd. Living units. That certainly changing all of these to high density is gonna take care of that. Right? Also, the the requirement for ADUs on every one of these lots is taking care of it also.
Why are you considering a lot holes? That's required.
We're required to allow.
It's required to allow.
Where to allow, yes.
So I mean, same thing as rezoning needs to to R ones and R twos, it's just that. We're requiring it to allow for a higher density of living spaces. Right? So the argument, not the argument that I'm making, but the discussion I'm trying to have here is that. Is that by allowing the existing. Housing criteria of R one. To to have ADUs. Into. Creates available housing of greater than of, but if everybody put an ADU on your property, there would be fifteen hundred additional. Uh, living spaces.
But you can't expect that that's gonna happen.
I can't expect that anything's gonna happen.
Yeah, you can't expect.
It's theoretically, just like it's theoretically that these houses, the the ones that we're bringing back in. That don't that were taken out because they don't have any infrastructure, but they're going to take care of the additional units.
Well, I think the current could allows you. This is because.
There's a there's a clause of um.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's what we have.
Right.
Thank you.
But to her point, I I would say that you gotta at least put them back in and let them get scored. Because otherwise, you're you're feeding the. The fire from. Property owners in El Matos who are on the twenty percent. And now twenty percent, you took that out because it was twenty percent, but you didn't take me out. Think you gotta at least throw it back in and let it get scored.
Okay.
Because again, she's talking about defending it. To be able to defend it, why did we do that? And then we didn't do it consistently across the entire map.
If we're looking. But this thing, maybe we're looking for a way to take some things out, is that?
Yeah. But I don't think this will get us there.
Yeah, I don't either. Like, we're looking for a way to take things out.
That's that's um dropping the. Dropping the um. This little number we're using.
I know, and something that we need to think about too is that if we we have to apply this in all parents across the board.
Yeah, exactly.
Right? So I mean, we can't just say, okay, well, we're gonna take the lemon city off the off the table and. You're not gonna be able to increase densities there, but they can increase the densities with ADUs. And then go and rezonate other parts of the city, right? So. So when we score these lots and they come out low, where are they gonna fit in?
It's fine, at least we did it, and we can defend the fact that like we didn't just like it, we looked at it.
Well, you gotta go, you either either way, you either got to. Put them back in and let them get scored, or you've got to take out everything that hits twenty percent. And zone for designated appropriately that way, you can't split it. We did this, but different teams are in our practice, and we did this over here. You've gotta go one way or the other.
My issue with the larger lots is they do have a large proportion of twenty percent, but they're such large lots, even a a ten percent of. Four acre lot is gonna be a large goal for.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. That's just what I. How much of the lot is twenty percent gray for it to get scored as the, like, is it like?
It's visual.
Yeah, so it's not a.
Yeah, it's a visual.
It's a visual, and you can see on the red map, you'll see the white. White dots, I mean, you know, and I just.
So red is greater is twenty percent greater than gray is approximately ten percent greater.
Yeah, I want to shift the white and the red.
White and red.
Yeah, on your assessment.
I think on the one map you had dark to red.
Yeah, yeah. I did. You know, it's all in the red, um, so. That there is only a regular twenty, that was your.
Yeah, so it just it shows some there. Yes, it's on this one on the right, it's a large parcel, so I don't know if I may increase it, but that's. We'll just say. One to ten percent of that law.
Yeah, that one's scored low. That one wasn't taken out, that one just scored low.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, yeah, I mean. But I do leave these ones to the north, I mean, you know, there's like it's one that we're at crosshairs that have some like actually that one was right.
Yeah.
So um, yeah, uh. I'm gonna do. Do again, I'm gonna switch, switch again because. You know, actually. So your friends are locked in number them.
No, no, these ones that are kind of a.
The left.
On the north side of that ridge.
See that the one that kind of has it like diagonal down.
You're talking about like Laurel Laurel Butte above? Well, see at the bottom, we have that.
But I don't think we have to go through the specific, I think we just have to be standard about the way that we're applying everything, so. I would like to see all of the twenty percent slope just thrown back in. Um, and scored. That's what I would like to see.
Okay.
And then.
We're good with that.
So that lot was stored. But it only should point. This actually might make sense, that might be easier to try. How is it different? Now, because now we see everything, now. This was a lot I think you were referring to. That one? So that one. All zeros, that would put up a true. But the one right next to it, uh, just scored low.
Yeah.
Towards one. This one over here. It's it. You see that um, it's still said R one, but that's not slope, that's just low scoring.
So do we have any areas that weren't scored at all?
Yeah.
So.
And.
Oh, those. Little lots down in State Street with the two inch main. Um, most houses have three quarter inch service. Uh, you can get eight. Three quarter inch services off a two inch main. So I'm gonna propose maybe those can put back on.
So. When we went through this one process, I think it was scored with the. Which made it less, we see that one uh, really low score, so.
Yeah, there's on four houses, they could. We have duplexes and. This.
Yeah, it's a question of what what all is. On the two inch main that makes the difference with the.
Right, right. I think that initially we asked, what is a supportive number for those, right?
But is that the only reason that that's scored low is because it's a two inch tree?
Normally originally want that. But I don't think they can put a height. No. What's that?
There's less than a two inch.
Oh, it's less than two inch?
Yeah.
Then. There were some. Some that had a one inch.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay, so what I'm hearing, we're gonna score everything that's not been scored. Alright. Our next up.
And then back in the rotation?
Yeah.
And so. We have a. We set up the public hearing for two weeks.
On April fifteenth. Yeah.
Yeah, correct. So then what you want to do now, then, I still want to have a relation for that public hearing back out to. Whatever idea has to be done. By April first.
So we have put another work session before. Well, that's to this.
How how much time do you need to do those back in as far as?
At least give me March thirty.
Well, we was asking, because initially we had said. We're we're thinking about that.
Yeah, it's. When you think about it, um. We're dealing with those, which I think too long. But I still need a couple days. Well, I wish we're the gates I still have. Other duties to do as well.
Well, I mean, that's that means that this week we need another work. Yeah. So what is everybody looking at? How about on Wednesday?
On Wednesday or you're out Wednesday? Did you propose Wednesday?
Like a day after tomorrow?
Yeah. Thursday. Thursday good for everyone?
When, so we have the fourth. Thursday at month?
Yeah, no, no, it's the third. Thirty seconds, the twenty seven. Yeah, it's the fourth Thursday of the month.
We need to also move the seat down a bit.
Yeah, seven P M, going until nine thirty is brutal.
Yeah.
That is. Go on, yeah, we can go with five.
Yeah, we did do, well, no, because it's a paper. Yeah. If. I do have his. We can't set whenever the mark, but that's true to the matter, but I think it's a secret of the public.
Well, I mean, are are the people meeting in the back room? Are there many people meeting here?
They're gonna be meeting at tire hall, but we don't have ones a week. That's it, he's a part of. Well, this is not a city.
That puts us back on.
But they are using our zoom count.
That goes back to Wednesday then?
No, that's not our, so we're good.
Oh, we're good on when?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. Anytime, huh?
I understand it is.
I might be.
Yeah, it's maybe, I mean, yeah, I have a small child, I can't, I mean.
No, I mean, whatever works, whatever time works, um.
I don't know where it is, I lost it and I'm not sure what's happened. I did, and I. Okay.
All you is re-scoring of those.
Okay. Right. Right. Is, so is it six? Okay, is it six? Six, six o'clock, is that it?
You want to do five thirty?
Five thirty, it's fine, I'm I'm not sure what time I'll be back, but. You know. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess it was a reading on Thursday, it's just a wait, but. We do need to say the same, we need like three. It's in new time, so that uh. I have. One for sure, two, I just remember the third, so there potentially three major. And you build contacts, I, I need to contact to. The advocate to say this is a day.
Do I have to have set of plans for the building? No, I just need that. Okay. Well, I could.
You could be, so they could be four, but three that are chopping the day.
Okay, with the. Our next regular meeting?
Make certain interviews, um, yeah. So I have one of them I should be able to get emailed in their letter. Cleanliness within a day or two, which starts on the twenty eight block.
This is outside of the April fifteenth public hearing.
Uh, yeah, we can, we can. So. We are right now running on the third Tuesday of the month. There's any objections to the first Tuesday, Tuesday month, starting after April fifteen. The first Tuesday of the month.
Is that changing the meeting time or just the?
Um, depending upon the other major. You have, um, plenty of notes as well, at least. When you date notice.
So we're, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we might have to because I have other, we have other normal business to carry on.
Right, so right now we're on the third Tuesday of every month.
Right.
And you wanna go to where?
The Thursday, I remember.
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Standing on that.
We can do six, probably give back to you, make sure that works. But that would be after the fifteen.
After the fifteen?
After the fifteen, so that would not be.
That'd be May.
First of May.
First Tuesday and that.
Right.
Change over my own. That's also tree planning weekend.
Six, but it makes sense.
Well, that's, yeah, think of the mind.
They really don't want to try to put these in.
Yes.
What we likely be done with this? Did we have another? Word session and hammer this out prior to going into the fifteen?
I mean, what?
Wouldn't all this end on the fifteen?
I don't know if we get to request the number four at the same time.
Just thinking, once it's all. Once we've hammered all this out, isn't it? Going in just kind of be academic?
Well, academic, yes.
Well, but there's a public comments section for three and a public comment section for. And so that's gonna turn into a six hour meeting.
Right, no, I'm saying, he's saying after April fifteenth. After fif- April fifteenth, we go into business, business is normal.
No. He's suggesting that we can get through every point in the April fifteenth meeting, and I'm suggesting the public comment for points.
We might have to schedule more. Of those, but we're resetting our day, our, our regular scheduled program to the first Tuesday of the month.
Yes.
And on the first Tuesday of the month, we were doing normal business.
Third Tuesday, the third Tuesday of the month, as we're running so far. Is T G M, is this program, so we need a second one for our normal.
Right.
Great, and so we can keep. The six P M one, once we get done with this T G M stuff, we can stay on the. We, we try and move to that six P M slot on the first Tuesday, once we get through this stuff. Cause these seven P M meetings are.
We, we can.
We can.
Um, but for my soapbox, um. Six P M is hard for a lot of others to get here if they're going. Uh, uh, off work.
Six thirty?
So I guess, you know, we gotta be excited, but then my soapboxes, if we want, I would like to show up, we need to be here with public. And five, five o'clock, five thirty, we have too many people working about it.
So come, the city council at six now.
Yes.
And I, and I gave myself lots into, so.
And it seems to be working out well for them.
And after the public would get off of work by thirty, Eugene is.
I mean, people are always allowed to zoom in, you can drive and listen.
Yeah.
Hit the unmute button, three minutes of comment.
There's a, there's a.
This is a meeting weekend.
We don't know where that's at.
Yeah, you can just pull up and send her, yeah, that last council was pretty.